Speaker.
Okay, let's start. Today is Tuesday, July 7, 2020. Day seven of the sixth special session. The twenty-first Congress will now come to order. We all power heads for a moment of silent prayer. Senator DePereaux. Welcome.
Senator Arrietaz.
Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Figuerre.
Here.
Senator Coolant.
Yes.
Your Leader Harper. Senator Conman.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Ned. Senator Palick.
Yes.
Senator Perman. Senator Romelow.
Aye.
Senator Orsma. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina.
Yes.
The Speaker, thirteen members are present.
We have a quorum to transact business this morning. Your Leader Harper. Item four.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to you again. Our members, staff, and everyone who's serving from within our localities. I move that we dispense with the reading of our journal. The clerk.
Clerk.
It has been moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the journal. Those in favor say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the journal. Next item, DePereaux.
Mr. Speaker, item five, presidential communications, one receipt of numbers, twenty-one dash three hundred thirty-four through three hundred thirty-six.
Assign those communications, Chief Clerk. Short resist of the call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Next item, DePereaux.
Mr. Speaker, item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, none.
Continue.
Item seven, member communications, none. Item eight, departmental communications, also none. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none. Item ten, state communications, none. Item eleven, State Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, none. And item thirteen, foreign government communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
All right, we're now down on our order of the day. Item four, standing committee reports. Do we have any, DePereaux?
Mr. Speaker, we have a report, and it's standing committee report number twenty-one dash fifty-two regarding congressional resolution number twenty-one dash one fifty-three on Mr. SCL's nomination to the CIA Board from your committee on TNC for adoption.
Okay, Chairman Coolant.
Move for adoption of said resolution. A said report.
It has been moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number twenty-one dash fifty-two. Okay, discussion on the report. Your Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I may not be out of order, I'd like to amend my statements on page three. Last paragraph. After, on nine-three. After the word "fell," it should say, "he felt sort of nostalgic as he remembered the past when he used to serve on the CIA Corps with the late, with the late father of the nominee." "Based on the qualifications and experiences of the nominee, he kindly supported the nominee," and then go on.
Okay, short resist of the call of the chair. Right. Congress is back in session. Is there any second to the offered amendment to the report?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments to the report be adopted. As understood, the amendment itself will be written up and sent to Chief Clerk to be incorporated as part of the report. Okay, those in favor of the offered oral amendments, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. The offered oral amendments to the report are adopted. Okay, any continued discussion on the report? Is there any continuing?
Question called for.
Questions being called for. There's no objection by members. Debate is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the standing committee report number twenty-one dash fifty-two as orally amended, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. Report is amended, is adopted by Congress. Next report, DePereaux.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Right, we're now down on item fifteen, special committee report. Do we have any special committee report, DePereaux?
None, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item sixteen, assignment of measures and communications. We have a referral sheet number twenty-one dash eighty-six.
Hey, Chairman and members of the committees. Review that for your planning purposes. Next item.
Item seventeen, unfinished business, none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, item eighteen, this bill granted, first bill, DePereaux.
Mr. Speaker, the first bill is CP number twenty-one dash two thirty-nine for second reading. CP number twenty-one dash two thirty-nine is a bill for an act to further amend public law number twenty dash one seventy-eight as amended by public laws numbers twenty-one dash zero-one, twenty-one dash seven, twenty-one dash thirty-six, twenty-one dash fifty-three, twenty-one dash fifty-six, twenty-one dash one oh-two, twenty-one dash one hundred fifteen, and twenty-one dash one thirty-seven by amending sections four, five, and six thereof to change the use and allottee of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Punggol Bay and Chuk states and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
Any second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Congress adopt, I mean passed on second and final reading, CP number twenty-one dash two thirty-nine. Discussion. Any discussion? Your Leader Harper.
Mr. Speaker.
Your Leader Harper. And.
All of these.
Short resist of the call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're now discussing the CP number twenty-one dash two thirty-nine. We have a few amendments being offered. We'll go first, as shown on the link. Chairman Ned, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker. I have a short amendment to offer, and I asked the Chief Clerk to read it.
Okay, Chief Clerk, read the offered.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to CP number twenty-one dash two thirty-nine offered by Senator Ned. One item of this amendment is on page five, line seventeen. After the word "implementation," insert the words "current" and "prior applications."
So move for the adoption of the amendment, Speaker. Second.
It has been moved. Offer for amendment to CP twenty-one dash two thirty-nine by Chairman Ned, be adopted. Okay, Your Leader Harper. Any rules to suspend? Short resist of the call of the chair. It was recorded, okay. Congress is back in session. There is a motion to suspend, which was seconded, to suspend the relevant rules, specifically the rules prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading. Those in favor of that motion, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. The relevant rules are now suspended. So discussion on the offered for amendment by Chairman Ned. Any discussion?
Question. Question.
Been called for. If there's no objection, discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offered for amendment to CP twenty-one dash two thirty-nine offered by Chairman Ned, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. The offered for amendments by Senator Ned are adopted. We now have CD one. Okay, any further discussion on CD one? Chairman Romelow.
Thank you, Speaker. I have a floor amendment which has been distributed and linked and I wish to offer on the said bill, and because of its length, I ask to dispense the reading of the amendment. So.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that the offered for amendment to CP twenty-one dash two thirty-nine CD one by Chairman Romelow be adopted. Because of its length, we will dispense with its reading. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Your Leader Harper, discussion. Discussion.
May I ask for a short resist?
Open this. Call of the chair. Okay, so let's go back. Congress is back in session. Chairman Romelow.
Thank you, Speaker. I was to withdraw my earlier motion on the floor amendment to this bill.
There is no objection. The offered for amendment by Chairman Romelow is withdrawn. We're still discussing the CD one. Senator Christian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I offer the following floor amendment, oral amendment to Congress Bill twenty-one two thirty-nine. On page two, line nineteen, delete the words "Wapar," "Matalanim," "Community," "Water," and "Project," and insert the following, "Matalanim," "Enipas," "to Wapar," "Secondary Road Repair," same amount. I will share this with the Chief Clerk. I shall move, Mr. Speaker.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendment by Senator Christian be adopted. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Discussion on the offered oral amendments. If none, there is no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offered oral amendments by Senator Christian, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. We now have CD two. Chairman Romelow.
Motion.
Motion to defer. Hello?
Mr. Speaker, I move to defer the bill before Congress to tomorrow's calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress Bill number twenty-one dash two thirty-nine CD two be deferred to tomorrow's session. Those in favor of that motion, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. CP number twenty-one two thirty-nine CD two is deferred to tomorrow's bill calendar, tomorrow's session. Okay, next bill, DePereaux.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number twenty-one dash two forty for second reading. CP number twenty-one dash two hundred forty is a bill for an act to further amend public law number nineteen dash one twenty-four as amended by public laws numbers nineteen dash one thirty-three, nineteen dash one forty, nineteen dash one fifty, twenty dash five, twenty dash fifteen, twenty dash thirty-three, twenty dash forty-eight, twenty dash sixty-three, twenty dash seventy-one. Excuse me. Twenty dash one fifty-six, twenty dash one seventy-five, twenty-one dash twenty-two, and twenty-one dash fifty-two by amending section four thereof to change the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund priority infrastructure, infrastructure projects and other programs in the state of Punggol Bay and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Congress pass Congress Bill number twenty-one dash two forty on second and final reading.
Any second? Second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading, CP number twenty-one dash two four zero. Discussion. Any discussion on the bill?
Mr. Speaker.
Oh, Senator Christian.
May I offer an oral amendment? And again, we'll share with the Chief Clerk afterwards. On page two, line four. May I offer an oral amendment? And again, we'll share with the Chief Clerk afterwards. On page 2, line 4, delete the words "new road extension" and insert "in lieu thereof paved road shoulder and drainage improvement," same amount. I shall move.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments by Senator Christian to CP 21-240 be adopted. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. Let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offered oral amendments to CP 21-240, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. The offered oral amendments are adopted. We now have CD1. Any further discussion on CD1? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chairman Figuerre will pass for yap.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aratos?
Yes.
State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman? State of Koshai, Chairman Wally?
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Figuerre?
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
For that reason, CP number 21-240/CD1 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 21-241 for second reading. CP number 21-241, it's a bill for an act to further amend public law number 20-125 as amended by public laws numbers 20-135, 20-146, 20-157, 20-179, 20-189, 21-06, 21-40, 21-59, 21-96, and 21-141 by amending sections 4, 5, and 6 thereof to change the use and allottee of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of the states of Pompeii and Chuk and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the passes of the bill on second and final read?
Any second? The chairman. It's been moved and seconded that it's passed on second and final reading CP number 21-241. Discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Our leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have oral amendments to offer on this bill on page A, line 5 and 6, item K and L. The figure 5 also should be crossed out and in lieu thereof put in zero. And then, L, the figure 12 also crossed out and put in zero in place. And those two figures, 5 and 12, add them together and go up to line 1 after the word vessel. Add on that 17, so it will become instead of K, 47. I shall move, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments by Fr. Leader Harper to CP 21-241 be adopted. The relevant rules are still suspended. Should resist. Subject to call of the chair. Okay, Congress is back in session. We're discussing the offered oral amendments to CP 21-241 offered by Fr. Leader Harper. And because of the difficulty in receiving it, we asked that they email it to the Chief Kirk so she can properly and correctly put it in the version of the second reading bill. Okay, so any discussion on the offered oral amendments by Fr. Leader Harper? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed on the offered oral amendments. So let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offered oral amendments by Fr. Leader Harper, say yes. Oppose, no?
Yes.
Mary? The offered oral amendments by Fr. Leader Harper are adopted. We now have CD1. Any further discussion on CD1? If none?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Christian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a floor amendment that has been written and distributed to members. It contains five items. And because of its wordiness, I move that that written amendment be adopted.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendment by Senator Christian to CP 21-241/CD1 be adopted. And because of its mandate, we will dispense with its reading, and the relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. So discussion. Discussion on the offered amendments. If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offered for amendment to CP 21-241/CD1 offered by Senator Christian, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. The offered for amendments to CD1 are adopted. We now have CD2. Okay, any further discussion on CD2? Discussion. If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote. By roll call of delegations, Chief Kirk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aratos?
Yes.
State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman?
Amen.
State of Koshai, Chairman Wally? State of Yap, Chairman Figuerre?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all the four states voted in affirmative.
CP number 21-241/CD2 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 21-242. This is a bill for an act to further amend public law number 20-155 as amended by public laws numbers 20-177, 20-188, 21-61, 21-88, and 21-119 by amending sections 4 and 6 thereof for the purpose of changing the use and allottee of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Pompeii State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading?
Any second? Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading CP number 21-242. Okay, discussion. Any discussion? Discussion if none. If there is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Kirk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aratos?
Yes.
State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman?
Amen.
State of Koshai, Chairman Wally?
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Figuerre?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
Okay, CP number 21-242 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 243 for second reading. CP number 21-243 is a bill for an act to amend public law number 20-95 as amended by public laws numbers 20-173, 21-47, 21-72, 21-85, and 21-125 by amending section 5 thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Chuk State and for other purposes.
Figuerre.
Move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading?
Very, it's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading CP number 21-243. Discussion on the bill. Any discussion? If none, if there is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Kirk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aratos?
Yes.
State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman?
Amen.
State of Koshai, Chairman Wally?
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Figuerre?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
It's been written CP number 21-243 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 221-238/CD1 for second reading. CP number 21-238/CD1, it's a bill for an act to further amend public law number 21-43 as amended by public laws numbers 21-54, 21-71, 21-82, 21-103, and 21-107 by amending sections 4, 5, and 6 thereof to change the use and allottee of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Pompeii and Chuk State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre. Should resist. Subject to call of the chair. All right, Congress is back in session. Chairman Figuerre, motion to defer?
Mr. Speaker, move to defer the bill to tomorrow's bill calendar.
Okay, any second? It's been moved and seconded that CP number 21-238/CD1 be deferred to tomorrow's session. Those in favor, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. CP number 21-238/CD1 is deferred to tomorrow's session. Okay, next bill, Chief Kirk.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 21-244 for second reading. CP number 21-244 is a bill to further amend public law number 19-54 as amended by public laws numbers 19-62, 19-75, 19-79, 19-99, 19-119, 19-129, 19-136, 19-144, 19-173, 20-4, 20-56, 20-82, 20-127, 21-20, and 21-117 by amending section 5 thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Chuk and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading CP number 21-244. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Kirk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aratos?
Yes.
State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman? State of Koshai, Chairman Wally? Chairman Wally?
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Figuerre?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
For that reason, CP number 21-244 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have CP number 21-245 for second reading. CP number 21-245 is a bill for an act to further amend public law number 16-49 as amended by public laws numbers 16-68, 16-76, 17-06, 17-10, 17-23, 17-30, 17-32, 17-45, 17-82, 17-85, 18-28, 18-45, 18-59, 18-86, 19-11, 19-106, 19-110, 20-108. 20-108, and 21-16 by amending section 5 thereof for the purpose of changing the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in Jhuk state and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figer.
Move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading. Bill number 21-245. Discussion. Any discussion?
Mrs. Speaker, short recess please.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Let's go back. Congress is back in session. We're still on the bill 21-245. I don't think any motion has been made yet. Chairman, Senator Christian.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that the bill before Congress now be deferred to tomorrow's calendar.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that CP number 21-245 be deferred to tomorrow's session. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no, motion carried. CP number 21-245 is deferred to tomorrow's session. Okay, next bill. Chief Burke.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number 21-233 for second reading. CP number 21-233 is a bill for an act to further amend chapter 2 of title 3 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated and as amended by adding a new section 2 or 3 for the purpose of defining the place of sessions, defining extraordinary circumstances which permit holding session remotely and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figer.
I move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
Okay, any second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading. CP number 21-233. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So Chief Burke, roll call of delegations.
State of Jhuk, Chairman Aritos.
Yes.
State of Bunpe, Chairman Perman. State of Kusai, Chairman Wali.
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Figer.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted in favor.
CP number 21-233 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number 21-235 for second reading. This is a bill for an act to create a new section 224C of title 55 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated and as amended to clarify the procurement process of the judicial and legislative branches of the national government and of the National Public Auditor's Office with respect to computer equipment and for other purposes.
Chairman Figer.
Move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved. Any second? Any second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading. CP number 21-235. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, if there is no objection.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
Yes. Okay, yes, Prime Chairman Pali.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Short recess, Mrs. Speaker. Short recess.
Subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still discussing CP number 21-235. There is no further discussion. Questions being called for. There is no objection, debate is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Burke.
State of Jhuk, Chairman Aritos.
Yes.
State of Bunpe, Chairman Perman. State of Kusai, Chairman Wali.
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Figer.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted in favor.
For that reason, CP number 21-235 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill. Short recess subject to call of the chair.
Okay, so let's go back, let's go back. Okay, so let's go back, let's go back. Okay, so let's go back, let's go back. We discuss the bills, okay? Congress is back in session. We're still on the bill calendar. As we discuss the bills, okay? Congress is back in session. We're still on the bill As we discuss the bills, okay? Congress is back in session. We're still on the bill calendar. Vice Speaker Moses. calendar. Vice Speaker Moses. Vice Speaker Moses.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, members. I wish to withdraw and place Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, members. I wish to withdraw and place Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, members. I wish to withdraw and place on today's bill calendar CB number 21-251 for action. on today's bill calendar CB number 21-251 for action. on today's bill calendar CB number 21-251 for action.
Second. 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 Then moved and seconded, that's CB number 21-251 be withdrawn from committee and placed Then moved and seconded, that's CB number 21-251 be withdrawn from committee and placed Then moved and seconded, that's CB number 21-251 be withdrawn from committee and placed Then moved and seconded, that Congress passed on first reading action. Usef, Chairman on the bill calendar for first reading action. Any rules to suspend the floor leader or we'll on the bill calendar for first reading action. Any rules to suspend the floor leader or we'll on the bill calendar for first reading action. Any rules to suspend the floor leader or we'll Collet, you have any motion to make or... pass that time? pass that time? pass that time?
Yes, I was about to request which committee that assigned to this bill, because I need
Yeah, I think what day is today? Is it seven days? So we already... Yeah, I think what day is today? Is it seven days? So we already... Yeah, I think what day is today? Is it seven days? So we already...
to educate myself on that propose.
We're good, yeah? Alright, so let's vote. Those in favor of the motion to withdraw We're good, yeah? Alright, so let's vote. Those in favor of the motion to withdraw We're good, yeah? Alright, so let's vote. Those in favor of the motion to withdraw It's assigned to Ways and Means? and place CB 21-251, say yes. A vote no, motion carried. So CB number 21-251 is withdrawn and place CB 21-251, say yes. A vote no, motion carried. So CB number 21-251 is withdrawn and place CB 21-251, say yes. A vote no, motion carried. So CB number 21-251 is withdrawn That's a tax bill?
Okay.
from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Okay, Chief Clerk? from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Okay, Chief Clerk? from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Okay, Chief Clerk? Okay, make your motion.
Mr. Speaker, I saw move. Second.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 21-2, I mean 21-251 for first reading. CB number Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 21-2, I mean 21-251 for first reading. CB number Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 21-2, I mean 21-251 for first reading. CB number
No short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, where are we? Are we... Has there been a
21-251 is a bill for an act to appropriate the sum of $2.1 million from the General 21-251 is a bill for an act to appropriate the sum of $2.1 million from the General 21-251 is a bill for an act to appropriate the sum of $2.1 million from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2020, Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2020, Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2020,
motion for passage?
Mr. Speaker.
for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs with the people of Yap, for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs with the people of Yap, for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs with the people of Yap,
Motion for passage?
Koshai, Bunbei, and Chuk states and for other purposes. Koshai, Bunbei, and Chuk states and for other purposes. Koshai, Bunbei, and Chuk states and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa? Chairman Figueroa? Chairman Figueroa.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of Senator Figueroa and yourself, I move that Congress pass
Vote for the process of the bill on sec, on first reading. Vote for the process of the bill on sec, on first reading. Vote for the process of the bill on sec, on first reading.
the bill on first reading.
Second. 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 Okay, any second? Then moved and seconded, that Congress passed on first reading CB number 21-251. Then moved and seconded, that Congress passed on first reading CB number 21-251. Then moved and seconded, that Congress passed on first reading CB number 21-251. Any second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded, that Congress passed CB number 21-249 on first reading. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So Okay, discussion. Any further discussion? If none... let's vote by oral call of members, first reading. Chief Clerk? let's vote by oral call of members, first reading. Chief Clerk? let's vote by oral call of members, first reading. Chief Clerk?
No.
Senator Arrethos. Senator Arrethos. Senator Arrethos.
Yes, Chairman Figueroa?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
I was thinking of venturing an oral amendment to amend the income tax. Instead
Senator Christian? Senator Christian? Senator Christian?
In mind. In mind. In mind.
Senator Figueroa? Senator Figueroa? Senator Figueroa?
Then three, yes. Then three, yes. Then three, yes.
Reluctantly. Reluctantly. Reluctantly.
of paying 10%, perhaps go down to, and again, it's a compromise to five, because I see
Senator Collins? Senator Collins? Senator Collins?
Don't lie. Don't lie. Don't lie.
what some of us are saying. It's just a, it's a break, and I don't think it would be fair
Senator Collins? Senator Collins? Senator Collins?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Floor Leader Harper? Floor Leader Harper? Floor Leader Harper?
A piece of cake is better than nothing, yes. A piece of cake is better than nothing, yes. A piece of cake is better than nothing, yes.
for others who are paying their income tax in full, and these people won't get a right
Senator Conman? Senator Conman? Senator Conman?
to a break. So perhaps what I think, I still believe that they should be contributing,
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Speaker Moses? Mr. Speaker Moses? Mr. Speaker Moses?
Very. Very. Very.
Senator Ned? Senator Ned? Senator Ned?
Very. Very. Very.
because as someone said, they'll be sitting around, not doing anything. And I believe
Senator Palick? Senator Palick? Senator Palick?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Senator Perman? Senator Perman? Senator Perman?
Manymen said yes, so I said yes. Manymen said yes, so I said yes. Manymen said yes, so I said yes.
Senator Romolo? Senator Romolo? Senator Romolo?
that when things come back to normal, they will go back to doing their jobs. So there's
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Senator Orsma? Senator Orsma? Senator Orsma?
really, if we take this tax, income tax out, it will then be a complete break for them,
Senator Welly? Senator Welly? Senator Welly?
Painfully yes. Painfully yes. Painfully yes.
while it's not fair for the others. But it's just a thought, it's a way of compromise.
Speaker Semenek? Speaker Semenek? Speaker Semenek?
Well, now you can...
Mr. Speaker.
Yes?
Mr. Speaker, thirteen members, quarter four. Mr. Speaker, thirteen members, quarter four. Mr. Speaker, thirteen members, quarter four.
Mr. Speaker.
Senator Christian? The President, CB number 21-235, I mean 251, has passed Congress on first reading. The President, CB number 21-235, I mean 251, has passed Congress on first reading. The President, CB number 21-235, I mean 251, has passed Congress on first reading.
There is another level of government that will benefit more if we took the income
Next bill? Next bill? Next bill?
tax out, and that is the state governments, which will be able to collect more on the
Chairman, Mr. Speaker. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. Chairman, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. sales tax that is expended by the recipients of checks. You know, for a $600 check, the
Yes, Senator Christian? Yes, Senator Christian? Yes, Senator Christian?
Yes, I do also have a bill I wish to withdraw from, to withdraw from the Committee Yes, I do also have a bill I wish to withdraw from, to withdraw from the Committee Yes, I do also have a bill I wish to withdraw from, to withdraw from the Committee 10%, the 10% represents $60, and of course, if we took the 20, the 15% also for Social on Ways and Means and place on the calendar for first reading, for consideration of the on Ways and Means and place on the calendar for first reading, for consideration of the on Ways and Means and place on the calendar for first reading, for consideration of the Security, together that makes $150 deduction from someone who receives a $600 check. members. members. members.
What's the bill number? What's the bill number? What's the bill number?
May I explain? The bill number is 249, and it has to do with allowing Social Security May I explain? The bill number is 249, and it has to do with allowing Social Security May I explain? The bill number is 249, and it has to do with allowing Social Security But, Mr. Speaker, I move for the previous question.
Okay. Then moved and seconded, that the discussion be closed. There is no objection.
to deduct contributions from the unemployment assistance money, but does not allow contribution, to deduct contributions from the unemployment assistance money, but does not allow contribution, to deduct contributions from the unemployment assistance money, but does not allow contribution,
Debate is closed. So we will vote by oral call of members, first reading. Chief Clerk?
I mean deduction for the income tax portion. This also is a compromise bill, Mr. Speaker. I mean deduction for the income tax portion. This also is a compromise bill, Mr. Speaker. I mean deduction for the income tax portion. This also is a compromise bill, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Arrethos?
My motion to withdraw and place will be followed by a motion to defer action on the My motion to withdraw and place will be followed by a motion to defer action on the My motion to withdraw and place will be followed by a motion to defer action on the bill to
No.
Senator Christian?
In mind.
Senator Figueroa?
bill to tomorrow's calendar. So if it's permissible, Mr. Speaker, I move that Congress Bill 21-249 bill to tomorrow's calendar. So if it's permissible, Mr. Speaker, I move that Congress Bill 21-249 tomorrow's calendar. So if it's permissible, Mr. Speaker, I move that Congress Bill 21-249
Senator Figueroa?
Senator Figueroa?
Appointing voting.
be withdrawn from committee. be withdrawn from committee. be withdrawn from committee.
Second. Second. Second.
Speaker, Speaker. Speaker, Speaker. Speaker, Speaker.
Senator Collins?
Then moved and seconded, that CB number 21-249 be withdrawn from committee and placed Then moved and seconded, that's CB number 21-249 be withdrawn from committee and placed Then moved and seconded, that's CB number 21-249 be withdrawn from committee and placed
Senator Collins?
on first reading action. Usef, Chairman Collet, you have any motion to make or... on first reading action. Usef, Chairman Collet, you have any motion to make or... on first reading action. Usef, Chairman Collet, you have any motion to make or...
No.
Floor Leader Harper?
Yes.
Yes, I was about to request which committee that assigned to this bill, because I need Yes, I was about to request which committee that assigned to this bill, because I need Yes, I was about to request which committee that assigned to this bill, because I need
Senator Conman?
to educate myself on that propose. to educate myself on that propose. to educate myself on that propose.
It's assigned to Ways and Means? It's assigned to Ways and Means? It's assigned to Ways and Means? That's a tax bill? That's a tax bill? That's a tax bill?
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay, make your motion. Okay, make your motion. Okay, make your motion.
Mr. Speaker, I saw move. Second. Mr. Speaker, I saw move. Second. Mr. Speaker, I saw move. Second.
No short recess, subject to call of the chair. No short recess, subject to call of the chair. No short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Okay, there was that motion which was seconded, that Congress is back in session. Okay, there was that motion which was seconded, that Congress is back in session. Okay, there was that motion which was seconded, that CB 21-249 be withdrawn and by committee from committee and placed on the bill calendar. CB 21-249 be withdrawn and by committee from committee and placed on the bill calendar. CB 21-249 be withdrawn and by committee from committee and placed on the bill calendar. Those in favor of that motion, say yes. A vote no, motion carried. CB number 21-249 Those in favor of that motion, say yes. A vote no, motion carried. CB number 21-249 Those in favor of that motion, say yes. A vote no, motion carried. CB number 21-249 is withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. is withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. is withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for first reading action. Chief Clerk? Chief Clerk? Chief Clerk?
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
Page the title. Page the title.
Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 21-249. This is a bill for an act to amend section Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 21-249. This is a bill for an act to amend section Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 21-249. This is a bill for an act to amend section 161 of chapter one of title 54 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, sanitized 161 of chapter one of title 54 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, sanitized 161 of chapter one of title 54 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, sanitized as enacted by Public Law number 21-145, by removing the 10% taxation of unemployment as enacted by Public Law number 21-145, by removing the 10% taxation of unemployment as enacted by Public Law number 21-145, by removing the 10% taxation of unemployment assistance and for other purposes. assistance and for other purposes. assistance and for other purposes.
Okay, there you have it. Chairman Figueroa? Okay, there you have it. Chairman Figueroa? Okay, there you have it. Chairman Figueroa?
Short recess. Short recess. Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We will, okay. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, where are we? Are we, has there been a motion for passage?
Mr. Speaker.
Motion for passage?
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of Senator Figuer and yourself, I move that Congress pass the bill on first reading.
Okay, any second? Any second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CP number 21 dash 249 on first reading. Okay, discussion. Any further discussion? If none. Yes, Chairman Figuer?
I was thinking of venturing an oral amendment to amend the income tax. Instead of paying 10%, perhaps go down to, and again, it's a compromise to five. Because I see what some of us are saying. It's just a, it's a, it's a break. And I don't think it would be fair for others who are paying their income tax in full. And these people will get a right to break. So perhaps what I think, I still believe that they should be contributing. Because as someone said, they'll be sitting around, not doing anything. And I, I believe that when things come back to normal, they will go back to doing their jobs. And so there is really, if we take this tax, income tax out, it will then be a complete break for them, while it's not fair for the others. But it's just a thought, it's a way of compromise.
Well, now you can.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker.
No question.
There is another level of government that will benefit more if we took the income tax out. And that is the state governments, which will be able to collect more on the sales tax that is expended by the recipients of checks. You know, for a $600 check, the 10%, the 10% represents $60. And of course, if we took the 20, the 15% also for social security together, that makes $150 deduction from someone who receives a $600 check. But, Mr. Speaker, I move for the previous question.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that the discussion be closed. There is no objection, debate is closed. So we will vote by our call of members, first reading. Chief Clerk?
Senator Aritels?
No.
Senator Christian?
Your line.
Senator Figuer? Senator Figuer?
Approving, voting.
Senator Collin? Senator Collin?
No.
Florida Harper?
Yes.
Senator Conman?
Nay.
Vice Speaker Moses? Senator Knell? Senator Palick?
No.
Senator Perman?
Yes.
Senator Romano?
No.
Senator Romano?
No.
Senator Orsman, Senator Welly?
No.
Senator Figuer?
Yes.
You got your approving, thank you. Run away.
Speaker Semina?
No.
Mrs. Speaker. Seven members voted in favor.
For that reason, CP number 21 dash 249 does not pass Congress on first reading. Next bill?
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Any short recesses, subject to call of the chair? Calendar for today, so move. Second. It's been moved and seconded that resolution number 21 dash 165 we withdraw from committee and place on the field calendar, I mean, resolution calendar for those in favor of that motion say yes. Oppose, no. Yes. Motion carried, CR number 21 dash 165 is withdrawn and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Short recesses, subject to call of the chair.
Speaker.
Congress is back in session. Resolution 21 dash 165 has been placed on the, read the title, Chief Clerk?
Uh, Mrs. Speaker, CR number 21 dash 165 is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of $325,725 from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, or CDC, in order to provide funding support for the FSM Comprehensive Cancer Control Program, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Yes, thank you. So I so move for its adoption. Second. Seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 21 dash 165, discussion. Any discussion on that? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of resolution number 21 dash 165 say yes. Oppose, no. Yes. Motion carried, CR number 21 dash 165 is adopted by Congress. Next question, Chief Clerk?
Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Chairman Collin?
Speaker, I wish to withdraw and place resolution number 21 dash 158 for the order of business for action for today.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that resolution number 21 dash 158 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Short recesses, subject to call of the chair. You do it for your. Congress is back in session. We're still under motion to withdraw and place resolution 21 dash 158. Those in favor of that motion say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried, resolution number 21 dash 158 is withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Okay, Chief Clerk, first resolution, I mean, next resolution?
Uh, Mrs. Speaker, we have a congressional resolution number 21 dash 153, CD1, for adoption from your committee on TNC, which is attached to report 21 dash 52. Nomination of Mr. And, uh, CR number 2, 21 dash 153. It's a resolution giving advice and consent pursuant to Public Law Number 10 dash 72 as amended by Public Laws numbers 10 dash 103 and 16 dash 26 to the appointment of Mr. Trevane SCL to serve as support member of the Carolina Air Corporation, representing the state of Ponte.
Okay, there you have it. Motion, Chairman Collin? Uh, move for the passage, adopt resolution, second resolution? Second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 21 dash 153. Uh, discussion on the resolution. Florida Harper?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I have nothing to say about the resolution, but I want to reiterate my request. If all this nomination resolution can be deferred to Friday, so we can give up the few others, and then all, all of them on Friday.
Well, short recesses, subject to call of the chair.
Thank you.
We've come back. Congress is back in session. We're still on Resolution 21 dash 153. Vice Chairman Christian.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption. I move for the... Move to defer our action and all resolutions for confirmation of nominated individuals to our Friday session.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that Resolutions number 21 dash 153 and 21 dash 158 be deferred to Friday's session. Those in favor of that motion say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. So those two resolutions, 153 and 158, are deferred to Friday's session. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay. Let's go down to the next item. Chief Clerk?
Item 20, introduction of bills and resolutions.
If you have any measures to introduce, pass them on to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item 21, miscellaneous communications. None, Mrs. Speaker. Item 22, miscellaneous business.
You have any miscellaneous business, Chairman?
Mr. Speaker, yes, I do.
Yes.
I move that we recess until tomorrow at 10:00.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning. At your point, Florida Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I just want to remind our delegation, or I don't know, maybe only myself I'm going to try to sit back and iron out our misunderstanding of what happened to our federations.
Okay, yes, you and Chairman Romolo can sit back and work out. We can sit with you if we need to. Okay?
Also, Mr. Speaker, also in half an hour, we'll have a confirmation hearing on the nominee for the Council General Position in Anulut.
Staff members of that in 30 minutes. Okay, there was that motion. So those in favor of the motion to stand in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning true time, say yes. Opposed, no?
Yes. Yes.
Carry. Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning true time.